Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Now, one and two. Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Musto. Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Finance Committee, Facilities and District Committee. Oh, you can do this tip. Mr. Carino.
Mr. Marco. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. First segment of the meeting is going to be devoted to recognition and awarding of certificates for achievement. Before we do that, however, Mr. DePisa, School Business Administrator, Board Secretary, has a recognition. Mr. DePisa?
Those of you know, about a month ago, we had 22 inches of snow in a matter of about 15 or 18 hours. I've asked the custodial staff and maintenance staff, bus drivers, and part-time custodians, whoever could make it tonight to join us, and what I'd like to do is to have them stand when I conclude what I'm about to say. Yes, we know that it is part of their job and they do get paid. However, I'd like to recognize all of these individuals because Saturday night at about 6 o'clock, some of these individuals started the plowing and the snow blowing, okay? It continued Saturday night, all day Sunday, all day Monday. Also, we had some help from the township. Has to be recognized. We also had a contractor that we brought in. Has to be recognized. But these folks went over and above because naturally, they have families, they have homes that they have to take care of. They came in, they did what they had to do. I'd like to recognize the outstanding job they did because we were out one day that Monday. Some districts were out Monday and Tuesday. And I think it's a tribute to all of their dedication and hard work. Whoever's here, I'd like them to stand and be recognized, and I thank them very much.
To our faculty, our staff, our parents, our students, everyone was just so cooperative and out in the process that day. We know the roads were difficult, parking was very, very difficult. Everyone was just so patient and supportive of our efforts, and that really made us able to allow each day to go smoothly. So, our faculty, I know some of you were parking on streets, out and about, around the schools because we didn't have all our spots available. Parents were leaving for work much earlier than other days in order to get their kids to school on time, but the days went so smoothly. So, to the community, we really thank you for your patience and your support as well.
Steven, we have some chairs up here in the front. Usually, we're all the A-students. That's why I'm so worried. We do have some chairs up here. We have five chairs. You don't want to sit and stand this whole meeting. No other A-students.
Okay, to continue with recognition, we have recognition of students. And in presenting certificates, I'd like to introduce first, Mr. DeCorso, Principal of Roosevelt School.
Thank you, Dr. Carino. I'd like to call Mrs. Cosman up at this time at Roosevelt School. So, Mrs. Cosman's making her way up. Roosevelt School and Lincoln School participated in the PTA Reflections Program, which is a national program that the PTA National Chapter puts on every year. It encourages students to participate in the arts, and they're able to submit projects in various categories. Mrs. Cosman here is our representative at Roosevelt School. She helps work with the students and the teachers to put together their work, and then mails it out to the PTA. So, this year, we had several winners, both at the county level, and then we had students advanced to the national level. So, they're in the process of that judging at this time. So, I want to thank Mrs. Cosman, because it wouldn't have been possible without her hard work.
I'd kind of say thank you to the parents and students, for all of the support in this program, the students that submitted their entries and announced their jobs. They're very talented and a very proud student.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to first call the student that advanced to the Bergen County level, and that... Charles Derrick. Matthew Derrick. Alex Gala. Colin Lemke. Kristin Dayton-Sous. Okay, so at this time... Okay, so at this time, I would like to call up the students that advanced only to the county level, that are also now being judged at the national level. Lily Anderson. Emma Vannick. Brian Cosman. And Haley Spott. All right, congratulations to the students at Roosevelt School for all your hard work, and I can't wait to hear the results of the national judging. So, thank you. At this time, Mr. Rizell is going to call up the students who participated from Lincoln School.
Same exact program that Mr. Corso mentioned, Lincoln School PTA, organized for our students at Lincoln School. And two people that were instrumental at Lincoln School I want to recognize are our language arts teacher and our vice president of the PTA, Mrs. Paula Ellis. Our corresponding secretary is Barbara Burns. They were instrumental. Lincoln School has 15 students that were recognized at county level to be judged at the state level. I'm going to call those 15 students first. If you're here, please come on up and receive your certificate. Christian Quintero. Amy Cardenius. Andrew Palma. Temptofi Osununhade. Miriam Amad. Abigail Ayala. Saleem Saleem. Haley Downs. Anna Reikowitz. Laura Abreu. Julia Lima. Bianca Miata. And Amber Ferrera. And Alexis Data. And then we have three students that were advanced past the state level and are now being recognized at the national level. That's Ian Vega. Jillian Grace Burns. Olivia Oliver. It's my understanding that Olivia was invited to perform her instrumental music at the state convention of the PTA. So, congratulations.
So, Roosevelt School has one more award to give a student. I would like to invite Ms. Landboza and Ms. Barbara Abiscato up to present.
Okay, this was from the AMTNJ, which is the Association of Math Teachers of New Jersey. They had a math and art contest, and we submitted math, art, pieces of work, and one of our students, in Mrs. Abiscato's class, received the third-place finish, and her work will be published in the AMTNJ newsletter.
I would like to thank, of course, Mrs. Landboza for bringing the contest to informing all of our teachers, and of course, Mrs. Abiscato for then taking it forward and encouraging our students to participate. Mrs. Abiscato, Mrs. Landboza, word. Mount, our young lady's work, that's going to be presented to her along with the award and prize that was sent from the state. We're really excited. I see our young students' whole families here, so I would like to announce that Kayla Torano from Roosevelt School. Kayla, you want to come up and take a picture? You have to.
Thank you very much for your attention to the recognition program. We're certainly proud of each and every one of the staff members and the students, and we thank you for your attention.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are two separate motions.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Education and Communication.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept item 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Personnel, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Education and Communication.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Education and Communication.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Education and Communication.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Personnel. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
Education and Communication.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of Education, so there are none, I make the motion to accept number 1 through 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Abiscato.
Four.
Ms. Alberti.
Four.
Ms. Alcurey.
Four.
I will simply add one thing. For you people that did donate money for chairs, please make sure you read the letter in our packet that'll explain to you whether the donations are...
We don't have the letter. Damon's going to explain.
So, there was a band association... Mr. Grillo.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Malinak.
Four.
Mr. Musto.
Four.
Mr. Schwett.
Four.
Mr. Vuno.
Four.
A few years back, the band association fundraised, had fundraisers, various fundraisers, to raise
money to do auditorium restoration. There's a little over $18,000 that was gifted on a motion in May from the band association over to the Lurors Board of Education. I have that $18,000 in escrow. The only thing we can use it for is renovation to the auditorium, new seats, etc. So, along with the help of the majority of the writing, Mrs. DeMarco composed a letter that will go out for all of the people that donate, okay? Extending them the acknowledgement of the donation, to tell them that we're receiving a donation from Cedar Grove for X seats to do the refurbishment, and there's also other work to be done. And if they would be so gracious to keep their donation in place, their name would go on a chair. It's not going to be a new chair, but it's going to be a used chair, and the rest of the money will be utilized to fulfill renovating the auditorium. In the letter, all correspondence will come to me. There's an option if they do not want to do that. With the auditor's permission, I will be able to refund their money if they would like. Okay, so that's the explanation. You don't have a copy of the letter? I gave the board a draft copy of the letter that will be going out to all the people that donate. Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Jim.
Before we draw the meeting to a close, I bring your attention to the superintendent's report. That is a narrative with respect to multiple recognitions that certainly are deserved by students, by staff, by faculty. To respect your time, I certainly won't read it for you, but I draw this to your attention. A lot of work goes into the preparation of these reports, but that's only minuscule compared to the work of the dedicated staff members and the great work that our students do each and every day in our classrooms. So, certainly, these people merit attention and public attention and recognition, and I would respectfully ask that you take the time to review the superintendent's report in that regard. There is one item that is not in the superintendent's report that we would like to bring up verbally here at the close of the meeting, and that relates to the referendum upcoming in November and the redevelopment program, which of course is the future of our school system, the future of our community. And as you know, the quality of a community is directly related to the quality of our educational program. So, we have great human resources. We have fantastic students in our community, drawing our student community together with our educators and our parent community together in a unity of purpose. Hopefully, we can embrace, everyone will embrace, this redevelopment plan, the referendum that's forthcoming in November. A lot of information will be coming your way. Good information makes for good decision-making, so we certainly hope that you seek the answers to any questions that you may have at any level. The more difficult the questions, the better that it is for everyone, as I indicated before. This is the future of our community. It's the integrity of our community long-term, and certainly is something that Lindhurst needs, that Lindhurst deserves, whether you're an adolescent, whether you're in a middle school, whether you're in the lower elementary grades, or whether you're not yet in school. But this is our future. I'd like to turn over this portion of the meeting to President Vuno, who may also want to make a statement in this... I'm sorry.
So, just so some of you know, if you were able to join us last spring, we had multiple presentations going on. We tried to make ourselves available at Barry's Town Activities, and we had lots of visuals, and we hope to continue with that. But now, we want to give you some more to eat and potatoes about what our plans are, and that is all forthcoming. The most important thing to know is that we are listening to as much information as we can potentially get. So, if you have ideas, thoughts, expressions, please pay attention to the various forums that we're going to be offering for people to come out to share those ideas in groups of stakeholders, because we know that your information is invaluable to us. One thing that we are seeking to do is to start giving back to our students in a very neighborhood fashion, and our hope is to be able to structure plans that are going to facilitate neighborhood schools so that we can better service students in smaller classes, in buildings that are closer to home, give them elementary education that lasts quite a while with one building, and have that connectivity to a school community Whether you're in, uh, an adolescent, whether you're in a middle school, whether you're in the lower elementary grades, or whether you're not yet in school, but this is our future. I'd like to turn over, uh, this portion of the meeting to President Huno, who may also want to make a statement in this, I'm sorry, uh...
So, just so some of you know, if you were, um, able to join us last spring, we had multiple presentations going on, we tried to make ourselves available, um, at Barry's Town Activities, and we had lots of visuals, and we hope to continue with that. But now we want to give you some more meat and potatoes about, about what, what our plans are. Um, and, and, and that is all forthcoming. The most important thing to know is that we are listening to as much information as we can potentially get. So if you have ideas, thoughts, expressions, please pay attention to the various forums that we're going to be offering for people to come out to share those ideas in groups of stakeholders, because we know that your information is invaluable to us. Um, one thing that we are seeking to do is to start giving back to our students in a very neighborhood fashion. And our hope is to be able to structure plans that are going to facilitate neighborhood schools so that we can better service students in smaller classes, in buildings that are closer to home, um, give them elementary education that lasts quite a while with, with, with one building and have that connectivity to, to a school community for that time, before transitioning to a fantastic junior high school facility that will then be followed by offerings at a high school that's going to have programs that will be fostering the interest level of many different students. Um, we're seeking to go back to some vocational programming at the high school, making sure we're hitting on the performance and the acrobatics, dance, et cetera, of those students who are musically inclined, and we can provide them with such facilities. And then of course, raise our level of academics and provide a structure that allows for departmental organization for classrooms and for teachers, so we can really have classrooms that foster the content of the subject matter being, uh, offered there. So we have a lot of exciting things in store. Um, we really hope that you're out there to support us and that you are in part of the process, because this, this is for all of us. Um, and, and I just thank the board for their support. Um, we're so thankful to the township for their support, because this is two groups all working in unison, as Dr. Carino said, with a unity of purpose. Um, on March 8th, we're going to be having joint meeting with the township that will be at the senior building, if I'm correct? At the senior building, six o'clock, March 8th. Please mark it down, please come out and support. You'll hear more then, and then of course thereafter.
Um, I'd just like to say, you know, the last time we passed a referendum, I think, if I'm not mistaken, was the year 2000, okay? Um, our schools definitely need to be improved, as all of you know. Everyone here, uh, you're here for a reason, uh, you're either educators, you're parents. You have a stake in this, you have the biggest stake in this. I think this is like, uh, one of the rare times that we have an entire Board of Education and an entire commission of the town willing to work together to get this done. If this passes us by, we don't know when it's gonna come up again. And it's gonna be up to you people, and Shawna and Jimmy are gonna be putting out, uh, all kinds of information. We're gonna be having all kinds of meetings, but if we let this opportunity slip and let it go, it's gonna be a long time again before we can get all parties, like we have now, dedicated to improving all the buildings, the, the new, the new junior high, everything that you could imagine that you would want for your children. My stake is I have grandchildren. So people that are my age out there, you have your grandchildren, that's what you gotta be looking to. And I think we have a golden opportunity here, and we can't let that slip. So if you have any questions, if you have any doubts, come and see Jim, or Shawna, or myself, or any board member, and we'll be glad to sit down with you and discuss your concern. Thank you. We have, uh, public hearing, uh, we have non-agenda items. We have, Malina? Malina?
Well, regarding what you just spoke about, um, I do work in town, and I do have a lot of clients that are seniors and have brought up the whole referendum and by doing so with our school, our schools in general, um, and we need to push it a little more, because the seniors that have come to do, get their job done, that I'm doing, are against it. So I...
Well, I think, no, let me just say this, dude. I think if they come and listen, um, and Richie can speak to this a little better than I can, sir. But like, the first five years, I let Richie talk, but first of all, from the seniors' perspective, many are on a tax freeze anyway, and I think they need to be, they need to be reminded that, uh, there won't be an impact for that. Others need to understand that if their choices are to come to the point in life where they want to sell their home, that the value of their home is gonna be direct related, directly related to the quality of education, and it's a tremendous, uh, uh, I guess you wanna talk about investing, if they are paying any money, it's a great investment in their property to, to the schools. As far as the impact, we'll get into all of the, the different dollars and cents. The immediate impact is zero. Both of these projects, whether it's from the Board of Education's perspective as a referendum, or from the township's perspective as, as a bond issue, uh, the first five years on the school board, the first ten years on the Board of Commissioners will be notes, not bonds. What does that mean? Means that basically the interest rates are below one percent, and you're not paying principal. So the impact is, is really not there. Another part of it is the reallocation of existing dollars already in your tax bill. One of the, uh, you know, if you remember NCAP, that wonderful project that we done in metal... We're, we're paying off a considerable amount of money to NCAP. Those, those bills are finished, they're, they're almost done. Uh, one part of it was somewhere around one point three million dollars every year in cash that's already built into a tax bill that will be reallocated toward the debt service. Another portion of it will be some of the bonds that we're paying off to them, to the, to another million or so. Uh, there's, uh, debt service relief that we're qualified for through the Board, through the Department of Education, but the, the overall impacts, we're gonna present a spreadsheet. And while that might be too complicated for some, for those who are really interested and honestly interested in not just posing the typical, it's not the right time, uh, it's too much money, the, the things we've heard for the, the last number of years, uh, they'll, they'll find that it is a, a really, really good, smart investment. And to get to one of the point which Chizzy was making before, President Huno was making before, uh, I'm sixty years old, there's been two referendums passed, one was when I was born, and one was in 2000. So, let's try to do one more before I drop dead. I would love to just see that happen. We've been around too many years and had too many opportunities pass us by, uh, including the first one I worked on in nineteen seventy-one, which would've been paid off many, 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 many years ago, but was denied to children because it wasn't the right time. Read the newspapers, it's the exact same thing. It, it's like a broken record, and you read, and you get these people, they rise up like they just came up with this epiphany, it's not the right time, it's too much money. You're saying the exact same thing they've been saying in this town for sixty years. The first middle school was proposed in Linners in nineteen thirty-one. I mean, come on, the, the time is, the time is here, and I don't know, as, as Mr. Huno said before, I don't know if you're ever gonna get to a point where you have a committed Board of Commissioners who are ready to, to invest the money from their side to build a brand-new school and to support it with, with, uh, their support for a referendum for other improvements in the balance of the schools in the district. That's why everybody who's here tonight, and we know you're here to support education, you're here to support progress, you have to come to one more meeting at least. The Board of Commissioners needs to understand that there's support from the community, especially the education community. If you don't support it, no one will. So, come out one more time at least, and then of course, election day in, in November.
You definitely don't have to sell me on it.
No, I know that. To answer your, to answer your question, if there's a group of seniors, okay? We will go to wherever they are, okay? Or bring them to wherever they wanna be, and we'll explain to them exactly what Richie said, there's not gonna be any impact on them, okay? And it's probably gonna be for their benefit when they go to resell their house or, uh, leave it for somebody. So wherever we have to go, you know, we're traveling salesmen, we'll go wherever we have to go, do whatever we have to do. But people, you know, you people out there have to understand, this is it. We're never gonna be in this situation again. So, you know, all you people that are educators and, and live in town, or are teachers, and you have a vested interest here, I mean, how great is it gonna be to have new buildings, a, a, a new junior high school, and all the buildings brought up to date for you to work in? I, I can't think of anybody that could be against that, and I don't know why you would. This is for the children of Linners today, tomorrow, and for a long, long time.
Um, that note, um, I'm not used to form an early question, um, you know, I feel that we, as a whole, sort of community, um, have to try and convince the seniors, because, um, you know, my mom is a senior, she's in for it, um, but there are a lot of seniors that are old school, and they're not thinking, well, I have no kids in school anymore, I don't care about the school, I don't care what happens to the school. And I'm just hoping that we have some sort of a game plan, maybe going to the senior building, um, talking to them, and forcing how it's forced to be. Because we have a lot of kids in these schools, as we all know, that need a better school system. So we need all of this, and as I said, I have hundreds and hundreds of clients I see every Saturday, and I'm pushing, whatever, everything's pushing up here, I do the same thing. They know me, like the board knows me, um, I'm for it, and whatever we can do perhaps to... Very hard to change, can't teach an old dog new tricks, the words, right?
Okay, but here's, here's you out there, I'm trying to show all the people that are here, and all the young teachers, and all the young parents in the town, if all the young parents in the town came out to vote, okay, you wouldn't have to worry about the seniors.
That's right.
The people that are here, the people that are standing here. We have many more young, educated people like yourself, the millennia, that are sitting here that don't come out to vote, and don't make themselves known.
If they're not registered.
We need you, we need you to go out and talk to all of your friends to get it done.
That's right.
We can't have any excuses.
Very great.
On a different note, um, just real briefly, um, regarding the new housing coming in our district, um, do we have a set game plan on the kids that are coming into our district, that are new to our district? We all know, we're already, we're already overcrowded, um, there's a little...
Referendum. That's the game plan. Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be three years from now, okay, when all of this is gonna take place. So, that's the game plan. By the time they get done down there, we're gonna be done over here, and hopefully, that's what's gonna take care of it. Now, they'll get into it deeper, but, um, you know, we have, we have contingencies, okay?
Sure. Answer your, quick way, answer your question, there's no way to stop down there building. The only thing you can do is go and show up to the meeting there, or if anybody wants to go down to the meeting, and explain to them how you feel about the building and taking over your town, basically building another Linners below the four year what? That's really the only thing you can do. And we try that, but we had, we received some concessions from them, but it's, it's a cliff. It's a foot on the radar, I mean, they're building two hundred and forty three liter units. They're giving us a road, and they're giving us a sidewalk, and they're giving us a bus.
They're not giving us a school.
And I think it's, it's going to be very important for everyone to, to keep the point that you brought up, and, and the important points that Mr. Musto just made in mind when examining the referendum. We have to think about demographics as they're going to be, and make sure that whatever we're planning for is going to be very long-term, and very feasible, and manageable, and still give us the type of schools that we want for our children. Um, so, so I thank you for bringing that up, um, and I just want you to know that we are taking very long-term, and looking at as, as many demographics as we possibly can when we're planning.
Ron?
Well, I, I'm just gonna reiterate, say what you said, just said. We, we have, we have like twenty-five hundred kids in our school system right now. Twenty-five hundred kids, that's five thou- approximately five thousand votes, probably. We've never had a referendum where we'd get that many voter votes out. So, we have plenty of votes. Senior citizens are not the thing that stops referendums today, believe me. I've been doing this a long time. All the senior citizens I know are basically for the referendum, because they understand that your, your house is gonna be worth more. It's very, it's very simple. The house is gonna be worth more money, and they can give that money to their kids or whatever they're gonna do with the house. But it's, that's not the problem. The problem is getting our people that are in the school system already out to vote, like, like we've been saying. And that's, that's what we have to do. That's it. There's plenty of votes there, believe me. And we have already, right?
Yep. There'll be plenty of votes out now, it's a presidential election, so the interest will be there to go to the polls. Now it's not of getting our word to those people who are over the border, that this is a good thing.
Okay, next, we have Sarah Miles. Come on, Sarah, come on up. We will talk. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get together and make sure we get something together. You're welcome. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.